Afternoon, I'd like to call this Higher Education Committee meeting to order. Today is March 16th, Thursday, and room 229, it's about 3:03 PM. This meeting is being streamed live on YouTube, and unlike any event, we must abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties. The committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business at 3:15 PM on March 21st in this room 229, and a public notice will be posted on the legislature's website. For people participating remotely, all testifier audio will be muted and video disabled until shortly before it's your turn to testify, and testifiers will be limited to one minute. At the end of the minute, the audio will be automatically muted. And if there are any temporary technical glitches during your turn to testify, we may have to move on to the next person due to time constraints, and we appreciate and understand. I appreciate your understanding, and remind you that the committee has your written testimony. So, present with me is committee member Senator Fukunaga, and I believe our vice chair is on her way, and hopefully other members who may be tied up in another hearing at this moment. So, to start off, we have resolutions. I'm going to take up two resolutions together, SR 23 and SDR 27, both requesting the University of Hawaii to support ending menstrual equity by providing menstrual products to all persons free of charge in all University of Hawaii restrooms. And our first person testifying is Dentry Bartolos. In support?
Actually, I'm here with the vice chair, I'm from the Hawaii State Council on Government. So, we send our written testimony.
Thank you very much. Cheryl Miyahara with Kapilani Community College. Nikki Ann Yee testifying for the Māori movement, supporting Zoom. Hi Nikki.
Hi. Aloha Chair Kim, Vice Chair Kidani, and committee members. Mahalo for the opportunity to testify. We stand on our written testimony in strong support part of SDR 27 and SR 23. We learned a lot when we advocated for free period products in the DOE. Inadequate access to period products has a direct impact on student attendance, performance, and overall well-being. And we're seeing the same problems in the University of Hawaii system. Since we started in 2020, seven out of the 10 schools have reached out to us for assistance, and we're happy to help because that's what we do. But it's clear that this is a widespread systemic issue. Students and faculty that have been trying to advocate for this for years have encountered pushback from administration or found that relying on student fees, grants, or community donations are simply unsustainable and unreliable. In cases like in the DOE, faculty have also paid for it out of pocket. We have to prioritize the safety and health of our students and the equal right to education for all. Mahalo again for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Will you stick around because I do have a couple of questions I want to ask you, and I want to go through the rest of the testimonies. Lahela Matos in support on Zoom. Lahela, are you here?
Not present on Zoom chair.
Farrah Marie Gomes testifying for University of Hawaii on Zoom. Farrah?
Aloha Chair Kim, Vice Chair Kidani, and members of the committee. Farrah Marie Gomes, Associate Vice President for Student Affairs with the University of Hawaii system. We have submitted testimony. We stand on our testimony and are available for any questions that the committee might have. Mahalo.
Is that the same testimony that was submitted from?
On behalf of Vice President Halbert, yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. Damaris Perida?
Present on Zoom chair.
Thank you. In support, Julie Ransilio for Kapilani Community College.
Hi.
Hello.
Thank you so much. Chair Kim and Vice Chair Kidani and Senator Fukunaga. I'm Julie Ransilio, Professor of Studies at Kapilani Community College. I am also the five-day Kappa on society advisor and have been for the past seven years.
You want to come forward?
Come forward. I stand on my written testimony, but I would like to emphasize two points if I could. First, I'm sure this subcommittee or this committee, excuse me, knows.
Oh, I'm sorry, can you say it?
Oh, you want me to say it?
Okay, because it's being, yeah, the people who are watching can hear you too.
Sure. So, I stand by my written testimony, but I'd like to emphasize two points. First, as the committee, I'm sure, is well aware, the majority of the student body, not only at the University of Hawaii, but nationally, is women. At Kapilani Community College, we currently have 64.5% of our student population identifying as female, and that is an increase of 5.6% over the last five years despite enrollment declines. So, if we really are talking about student success, menstrual products must be freely available in the restroom. We cannot have conversations that include student success without making these available to our students. Second, we should not be treating menstrual products any differently than toilet paper, meaning we should not be asking our students to pay out of pocket through dues, through fees. We also should not be asking them, as we, students have volunteered on my campus, to administer the program. Yes, they've learned a great deal. Yes, they have provided a valuable service. Yes, I am super, super proud of them, but what would I prefer? I would prefer that they use all of that time, all of that energy, and all of that little bit of money that they have made a priority for free menstrual products on Kapilani campus to go toward academic opportunities and other areas where they will succeed academically. So, thank you so much for listening to my testimony, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. And we really want to commend Kapilani Community College for implementing the menstrual products in the restrooms. So, thank you for that. Let's see. That's all the testimony that I have in person. I do have about 30 others that have sent in writing. Is anyone here in this room present wishing to testify on this measure? If not, members' questions? I'm going to start off with Nikki because I know she was on Zoom. Nikki, you still there?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Nikki, you mentioned in your testimony that you folks have approached the university and you've had pushback. Can you explain?
So, when we have worked with some of these schools, the students, we've sat in on a couple of meetings with, you know, some of the facilities, and I'm not speaking for the entire University of Hawaii system, but, you know, on that particular campus, there's pushback, you know, there's funding issues. They're concerned about, you know, over hoarding, sorry, or vandalism and implementation. And so, you know, we were trying to get it started on the campus, and we weren't able to get that support.
Okay, thank you. Members, any other questions? Now, thank you. University of Hawaii, Farrah, you still here?
Hi Chair.
Hi. So, Farrah, what do you say to the comment that, you know, students shouldn't have to pay for toilet paper and certainly shouldn't have to pay for feminine products?
We, I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, the question is why isn't the university providing this?
Yeah. So, we absolutely are in support of the testimony. We have not moved towards this on a large scale. All 10 campuses actually have programs now. They are scaling up, and efforts in this area have increased. We certainly are not at capacity of menstrual products in all restrooms. Some campuses are farther ahead than other campuses. And acknowledging the prior comments, some of that is through student fees, some of that are through institutional funds. So, right now, it does look like there's joint efforts going into standing up implementation, but it absolutely is not consistent based on varying resources across all 10 campuses.
How do you folks pay for toilet paper and paper towels and soap in the restrooms?
Those come out of institutional budgets.
Okay.
Individual campuses.
So, shouldn't this be also part of your institutional budget?
Well, I cannot answer for the facilities crew on that, which is why this testimony that was submitted today coming from Vice President Halbert and our suggestion to focus on students for the purpose of student success. It is an approach that we think would be successful and may not necessarily require installation in all restrooms. I think we would appreciate a little bit of flexibility in looking at which restrooms across various campuses are the high-traffic ones so that we can maximize the amount of resources that we invest in the program.
So, you're telling me that there's only certain restrooms that people can go to get toilet paper and not in others?
No, that's absolutely not my position.
But that's what you just said, that only certain restrooms should have it.
Well, I think we can absolutely scale to that. The programs that have installed dispensers in the restrooms on the campuses that have these now are utilizing larger dispensers. So, we would like some time and opportunity to look at other ways of being able to provide this. I think the comment made earlier about hoarding is a major one, especially when we would be opening this up to the general public and any users of the institution. So, going back to our earlier comment, if the focus were on students, I think we have a little better chance of success in implementation.
Do you know how much money is carryover in the tuition fund?
I am not aware specifically.
Okay, so every year, there's a carryover in the tuition fund of $350 million. And students pay into this fund. And so, I cannot understand that the university cannot find the resources to include this as part of their responsibility in sanitation in the restrooms to provide equal access for all students, especially when they're already paying. And much of their, not much, but some of their tuition is paying for things that doesn't really go through students. Goes to projects, it goes to programs that don't have students. So, I think that's why we're passing this resolution, that the university should be responsible enough to be able to provide this. Unlike our schools, our DOE schools, they don't have tuition money. They don't have the ability to raise funds, but the university does. And our schools, we have what, 170,000 students and three times the amount of faculty, if not four times the amount of faculty in the university. So, you know, to compare it, and I know you're not comparing it, but I am, to compare that, we should do the same thing with the university, it's very different. And again, they do have the ability to provide this, like they do the rest of the restroom's resources and products. So, I hope you will take that message back to the university. And I'm sure when we pass this resolution, that we'll also make sure we make that loud and clear in the committee report. So, thank you.
I will Chair. Thank you.
Members, any other questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Senator Kidani?
So, did you say that the products are going to be part of the students' fees? In student fees now, do they pay for products like toilet paper?
No, I think the comment that was made earlier was in reference to currently some of the campuses that have been already starting to provide products have been using student fees. So, some of their chartered student organizations have been the organizations that have sponsored the purchasing and installation of dispensers in the restrooms.
Okay, but then, this is for the menstrual products, not for toilet paper?
Yes.
Okay. My comment was just going to be, if you're charging the female students for fees for menstrual products, then you should charge the males for toilet paper too.
Correct. That is not the intent of the university. We are not looking at implementing any fees to support this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, members? If not, we will move on to the next agenda item. Senate Bill 554-HD2 relating to campus safety requires the University of Hawaii to ensure that any individual who participates in implementing the university's disciplinary process has training or experience in handling sexual misconduct complaints. The university disciplinary process requires that the university provide mandatory annual trauma-informed gender-inclusive LGBTQ+ inclusive sexual misconduct, primary prevention, and awareness programming for students and employees of the university. Prohibits the university from taking disciplinary action against individuals reporting sexual conduct unless certain exceptions apply, establishes position, and appropriates funds. Testifying, Dentry?
Senator, that's nice.
Thank you. Jennifer Rose for the University of Hawaii. Jennifer?
Good afternoon Chair. Good afternoon, good afternoon Vice Chair Kidani.
Members, I'm speaking on behalf of the university, Vice President Obea. We stand on our testimony and are available for questions.
Okay. I will, certainly have some questions, so please stick around.
Okay.
Okay. Also, we have Anna Ezy testifying for Every Voice Hawaii Support on Zoom. Anna?
Aloha Chair Kim, Vice Chair Kidani, and honorable members of the committee. My name is Anna Ezy, and I'm the State Director of Every Voice Hawaii, a student-led organization working to end sexual violence on college campuses. I'm also from Maui and a graduate student at the University of Hawaii at Hilo. I appreciate the opportunity today to testify in support of HB 554-HD2. The resources in this bill will make the difference for many student survivors between asking for help or suffering in silence. The 2021 UH Campus Climate Survey showed that five out of six student survivors did not access university resources, and more than half of students said they didn't report due to emotional concerns. HB 554 ensures that university employees responding to a disclosure of traumatic events like sexual violence have the skills and tools to respond in a trauma-informed manner. The same survey showed that in incidents of non-consensual penetration, half of reporting victims had used drugs or alcohol. HB 554 codifies amnesty for reporting parties to ensure that safety is the priority and students are not punished for seeking help. Improved scores.
Anna, I'm sorry, I hate to cut you off, but your time has ended.
Thank you.
We may have questions for you, so, thank you. Michael Golou testifying for the Stonewall Caucus of Democratic Party.
Good afternoon Chair. Michael Golou Jr., Chair of the Stonewall Caucus of Democratic Party of Hawaii. We stand in strong support of the legislation before you. We are just kind of disheartened to see that the university only supports the intent, and it doesn't strongly support this. And it's also a shame that they're not already doing this, and it's taking these brave advocates, these student advocates, to come forward to do this. And I do say brave because it's hard to speak truth to power, and these students should be focusing on their educations, not making sure they don't get raped on their way to school, when to class or coming back from class. So, we want to send out a heartfelt thank you to all the advocates that have been working on this bill, that we know we wouldn't be here without their dedication and their hard work. So, on behalf of the Stonewall Caucus, we want to thank them, and we want to thank you as well for hearing this bill and doing the right thing and passing this out. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. Lily James?
Aloha Chair Kim, Vice Chair Kidani, and honorable members of the committee. My name is Lily James. I'm a 2021 college graduate, and I serve as co-executive director of the Every Voice Coalition. And I'm honored to be here today testifying in support of HB 554-HD2. I stand on my written testimony, and will keep my verbal testimony very brief, but just want to share that right now, student survivors are not receiving the support they need following an experience of sexual violence. The statistics that Anna shared are true, that five out of six students who experienced gender-based violence did not access UH resources. HB 554 aims to address the issues and gaps at the core of this issue, and each word in this section is crucial and implementable, and has been implemented in seven other states. I'm really grateful for the opportunity to be here today alongside many wonderful students and survivors, and I'm grateful for the committee taking up this very important issue and bill. I'm also available for any questions on the bill. Thank you.
Thank you Lily. Next speaker is Nalani Kahai in support.
Aloha Chair Kim, Vice Chair Kidani, and members of the committee. My name is Nalani Kahai, and I'm a graduate student at the University of Hawaii at Manoa, Myron B. Thompson School of Social Work. Mahalo for the opportunity to testify in support of HB 554-HD2. Considering how common it is for a student to know of at least one person who has experienced some form of sexual assault or sexual misconduct during either their graduate or undergraduate experiences at UH, the number of students and employees who are not informed of any campus protocols or programming that can support them or protect them during the reporting process is astonishing. I've had conversations both in and out of the classroom with peers who have experienced sexual assault or harassment to some degree and don't know where to receive help or have reported instances of sexual misconduct, but nothing was done or limited support was given. We, the students, need to know that we can trust and rely on the university system to protect us as we continue our studies. Mahalo for the opportunity to testify and support as I believe that it will further improve the safety and protection of our students' health and well-being during their educational journeys and beyond.
Thank you very much. Let's see, I have about 25 others in support. Anyone here wishing to testify on this measure? Okay. If not, we are open for questions, and I do have questions from the University of Hawaii. So, isn't this something that you folks can do or should be doing on your own without any legislation?
Yes, thank you Chair. I think our very detailed testimony shows the work that we have been doing. It really only highlights, and we acknowledge that it could not have been without the help of the Women's Legislative Caucus. An Act 222-2015 report, which was a Sunshine Committee of half-community stakeholders and university stakeholders, put forth a blueprint based on a resolution that was authored by the Women's Legislative Caucus to create a plan for prevention, education, and the training of staff. I have been at the helm of that work since 2015, and we train our staff, investigators, first responders, advocates, decision-makers extensively. Of course, we always want it to be better. What this bill proposes is, we support the intent of it because it's really almost like a DEI framework for doing the work, you know, to be culturally competent, LGBTQ+ inclusive, disability-inclusive. And I think that all of those components, we have addressed through our training, that we actually currently revitalized a new online training platform, which does include trauma-informed training. Of course, we supplement that with live training as well. So, we are, Chair, have been working towards these goals for a number of years, as I think many in this committee know. And we are short-staffed currently, so it would be difficult to implement to another level, particularly when everyone else in the state is trying to move towards a trauma-informed state through the other state entities. And we have a trauma-informed task force now in an office through the governor that is trying to find a way to, so that we can have a baseline for doing this work. So, we made some recommendations in our testimony that suggest ways that we can move forward with our stakeholders as well as community stakeholders. And I want to reiterate, you know, I appreciate all of the testimony from advocates and survivors. I hope that if people are having dialogue with us, that they would know that we have been working hard towards these goals for a number of years, and it is a priority for us to ensure that students, employees, and anyone coming to the university who is sexually assaulted or experienced some form of gender violence feels safe coming forward. And I think our climate survey shows over the last seven years that we have made a lot of improvements. And I'm happy that the testimony of most of the testifiers is using the climate survey data of the instrument that my office wrote because we wanted that transparency. We wanted to know that there was a baseline. And I would actually encourage folks to dialogue with us because our researchers will be putting out our next report, the draft of which should be forthcoming in June. And I think that there has been progress made. Students feel more safe coming forward. They feel like their privacy is honored. More of them know their Title IX coordinators, more of them know of confidential resources. And of course, you know, in the next bill that you're hearing, we're always trying to uplift the confidential resource aspect so that students could feel safe coming forward without putting the university on notice. And we still have a lot of work to do, but to your question Chair, we are doing our very best to meet these goals already.
It's, for me, it's troubling in the sense that, you know, the university should be a leader, the university should be the one setting the pace. And we kept getting criticized for micromanaging, and we get criticized that you folks have autonomy, and yet in these areas where you should be leading and we shouldn't have to be directing. Now, I'm going to read you a thing from a student or alumni that I met with, called my office, and this is 2019. So, you know, you talk about all the progress you've made over these years. It says, "I'm alumni of University of Hawaii. I'm a survivor of sexual harassment from a tenure professor, currently still teaching." She, "I would like to meet with you in person to discuss the injustice that is present in higher education system. The lack of resources are provided to the vulnerable population of students and alumni, and what can possibly be done." She gives me a whole list. "I've typed up a concise yet detailed breakdown of which entities I've gone to and how they've responded, and what they've stated that they have jurisdiction over." And I did meet with her, and she did not get a lot of support. And this list includes entities I've worked with, Title IX, part of the university, Gender Equity Office, part of the university, PAO Violence, part of the university, Domestic Violence Action Center contracted with the University of Hawaii. The above entities attempted to outsource almost every type of tool that could heal my trauma with no cost to the university and the perpetrator. Although trauma is well-known to be emotionally overwhelming and taxing of time and resources, the informed entities of the university did not offer useful tools or inform me much of anything that I could endure post-being sexually harassed, nor were they trauma-informed in person. Through email and phone calls, they were quite pleasant, but they did not do anything to really help me." And she's, for years, and she came to see me at the end of this, and I tried to help, and we tried to get these services to her, and yet the university continued to be lacking. It's very troubling for.
I'm sorry to hear about her experience. That was a student from which campus? Or maybe you can share with me, may I follow up with your office?
Yes. Actually, it's 2019.
Yeah, and you don't have to share anything identifying. We can, if I may follow up with your office, I'm sad to hear about her experience because I think that there are good people that work in those offices.
But this is not an isolated instance from what I'm told. And, you know, I know my counterpart in the House has been actively pushing for Title IX issues, and I've gone to the university, I've met with the president, and really hasn't been satisfied with the responses. And therefore, we have these bills and we have resolutions that we continue to do, and yet we get criticized for, again, micromanaging or not letting the university have their autonomy when, if left to the university, we would not have these programs.
Right, to the issue of getting support for students and all victims, I absolutely think it's critical that all the first responder offices have the proper training. And are we there yet? You know, I think that we are much better off than we were, I hope, in 2019. I'm sorry to hear about that person's experience. That is, makes me feel sad as well as heartbreaking to hear the other stories of survivors. And yet, our data does show that we have made improvements. Do we want to do better? Yes. Do I think that the goals of the bill are important? Absolutely. And I think that it is a priority to be as inclusive, especially for vulnerable and marginalized populations and trauma-informed in all of the work that we do. And I appreciate your, and I'll follow up with you if that's okay with your staff about.
Members, any further questions? Senator Kidani?
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Of the reports that you get from students or others on campus for any violence or intimidation, how many of these are from people in authority, whether they're professors or grad students or whatever else?
So, in our last three climate surveys, we do them every other year as part of state law, but we started actually before the mandates. We looked at who the respondent was or the alleged perpetrator in the self-identified incidents of violence. For sexual harassment, there is a percentage where there is a power differential. Is that what you're, is that what you're looking at Vice Chair?
Yes.
I cannot quote the last climate survey. I can get that information to you, but there was, I think, for graduate students are particularly vulnerable, I think about 15% of those situations where it involves the respondent being somebody who is an employee. So, it may, we don't know enough. So it may, we don't know enough to know if it's particularly a supervisor, but you can assume that there's a power differential there.
Is this report made available to...
Yeah, I can send it to, I can send it to the committee, the most recent. Well, the most recent would be from last year. And we're working on, this year's, we should have a draft for discussion in June. But I can send you the numbers from last year and two years before that.
So when you say numbers, how many cases?
I, it doesn't show the cases because it's a self-report climate survey from the students. So all students, system-wide participated in. And the questions, when you self-identify as experiencing either sexual harassment, sexual violence, penetration, dating, domestic violence, or stalking, then there are added dropdown questions that ask the nature of who the respondent is. Is it another student? Is it an employee? So I don't have the correlation of that with the actual numbers of how many, but we could get those breakdowns. In the actual final report, you could see who the respondent is. And I think that's what your question is. And I can get that report to all of you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for the question.
I have one follow-up question. So in the case that this is a tenured professor, what happens when there are these kinds of allegations?
So if it's involving a tenured professor as the respondent versus, or a tenured professor as the victim?
No, as the respondent.
As a respondent against a student? I mean, I think it depends on the allegations and the facts. Your question is how would it be processed or what would be the outcome? The outcome or the sanctions would be, you know, similar to any other situation where, depending on the severity of what occurred, regardless of whether the person is tenured or not.
Okay, thank you. Members, any questions, other questions?
I can follow up on that. So in your recollection of the last couple of years, how many respondents have been professors or someone in authority?
I would have, if you're thinking about system-wide, I wouldn't even know offhand by campus. But we are, that breakdown is, part of that breakdown is through now annual report that we're starting to provide as of this year. So that data could be, some of that data could become available in the end of this year, in December. But I would not know offhand if the person's a professor. Through our climate survey, it would only denote if it's an employee. So professor could be an APT employee supervisor, a non-faculty supervisor.
Well, maybe that's what the report shows. But I'm saying if you guys are interviewing the victims and a name comes up that you've heard before, how much more investigation are you guys doing? Because to me, this is, this would be a problem. And yet, at what point is...
You're talking about somebody who looks like they are a repeat offender or their name has come up either. I mean, the formal investigation would be the same. But I think what would be taken into consideration and the finding stage or backfinding and then also in the decision-making for sanctions is, has this person, has this happened before? In which case, then progressive discipline, et cetera. If you're talking specifically about faculty professor. But if your question, Vice Chair, is would the investigation be different? Or are we addressing repeat offenders when we're aware of it? Because I think slightly different.
Well, I guess not just addressing repeat offenders, but if the person, the respondent is being in a position where, you know, the student's trying to get a grade and trying to get a course done, put them in a very precarious position.
Yeah.
That they can't find a way out of the situation.
I see. So that, as far as any formal investigation that the student may be requesting, what we would do is look at supportive measures and interim measures immediately to take the student out of the situation of that power differential or, and to limit the potential for the hostile environment or the potential for future sexual assault or whatever the allegation is to occur. So I think that would be handled, you know, during the pendency of the investigation.
And then what happens to the credits or the course that they're in and probably not expecting a grade from that professor?
Yeah, no, it's a good question. I think it, so from a Title IX perspective, Title IX coordinator would have authority to do a number of different things, including, you know, work with academic affairs and student affairs to ensure that this student is taken out of class. You can even get your tuition back, you know, put them in a comparable class so that they're not compromised or there's class schedule and their academic progress is not compromised. So all of those things I've actually done myself as a former advocate when I was at Manoa. And I think those, that, that those supportive measures are just, are as important, if not more important, than actually getting a finding. Because a lot of students are saying, "I just want to be safe. I just want to be able to access my education. I just want to go back to school without fear of retaliation." You know, I may not be interested in participating in an investigation and having to deal with it any further or be re-traumatized. So I think that piece, the supportive measures, when you're asking about academic adjustments, that's absolutely something that gets assessed at the very beginning of a case.
The other question then would be, once an allegation is made and you find some, something could be there, do you guys look at the number of females that continue to sign up for that course? Because word gets around, this professor is touchy, whatever, you know. So do you guys do any kind of accountability to see if that's, I guess, damaging the university's reputation? Because you don't get rid of the professor. So less females are going to be taking this course.
I think during the, looking at it, you were saying in the very beginning, without the formal investigation, you still have to balance the due process rights of the employee. But if there is any kind of allegations that are being made that draw concern for the safety of other people, other women in the classroom, then we would definitely make that assessment.
So has that ever happened?
Not that I recall during my time in this position.
Do you think it's appropriate for a professor to give an award called the Pussy Power Award to a female student?
No.
So if that happened, what do you think the university should have done?
I'm not sure how it was reported or...
Well, this particular professor stood at the podium and announced to the audience who the Pussy Power Award went to and said the award was commending this person and why she deserved the award. She mentioned it at least twice.
What was the nature of that?
Now, whether the nature or not is for a professor to be giving department awards and calling it the Pussy Power Award. Nothing was done. Apparently, this allegation was made and it would be easy, able to check on it. Because accordingly, a number of people were at this, at this award incident. And, you know, people just said, "Oh, that's just his humor."
Yeah, well, I would like to look into it.
And that's really troubling.
I agree. I would like to look into that if you don't mind my follow-up.
Does this fall under academic freedom and under tenure?
I mean, I don't, I don't know the circumstances behind it, but giving out an award does not sound like it falls under academic freedom. But I would have to know a little bit more of the circumstances.
I don't know that the award itself is officially called the Pussy Power Award, but made reference to it twice. Okay, just trying to make the point that these things go on on a regular basis.
I mean, the prevalence is there, you know, within, and you're right, Chair, Vice Chair Khedani, that where there is a power differential, where there is more vulnerability. And there's also more vulnerability with particular, you know, groups of students, LGBTQ plus students, immigrant students, international students. And there's still a lot of work to be done. You know, I'm not saying that, you know, we are anything close to being where we want to be. And I take your comments to heart.
And I'm not just singling out the male professors, but this could happen in reverse. And I don't know if you've ever had to investigate a female professor for what a student would say was misconduct.
I can say that it's with certainty that it's happened because I was involved in a, on a different level with the students coming forward for, I mean, with the professors coming forward on those allegations. So it has definitely happened in the reverse. Thank you.
Okay, no other questions, we're going to move on. Thank you very much. House Bill 5D, House Draft 1 relating to Victim Counselor Privilege expands the victim counselor privilege under the Hawaii Rules of Evidence to include confidential advocates employed by the University of Hawaii, increases the minimum number of hours of training a domestic violence victim's counselor must complete to be considered a victim counselor. Angelina Mercado, first testifier and support, testifying for the Hawaii State Coalition Against Domestic Violence. Not here. Jennifer Rhodes, testifying for the University of Hawaii. Jennifer, back to you.
Thank you, Chair.
Vice Chair and members, the university stands in support of this bill and I will be available for questions.
Thank you. Anna Izzy, you still here? Hi, Anna, go forward.
Aloha Chair and Vice Chair and honorable members of the committee. My name is Anna and I just want to testify in support of HB 580. Passing HB 580 is crucial to sustaining trust between confidential advocates and the campus communities they serve. By ensuring that advocates are truly confidential, 1 in 5 students said they did not report because they feared it would not be kept confidential. And yes, thank you for the opportunity to submit testimony in support of HB 580 and mahalo for supporting the health and safety of Hawaii students.
Thank you. Lily James?
Aloha again, Vice Chair Ken, Vice Chair Khedani, and honorable members of the Senate Higher Education Committee. Again, my name is Lily James and I serve as co-executive director of the Every Voice Coalition. And I'm here testifying in support of HB 580. I stand on my written testimony and will keep my verbal testimony very brief just to say that expanding victim counselor privilege to include confidential advocates employed by UH is a crucial step ensuring students can access resources and receive the support they need. Advocates serve as a critical point person to direct students to resources, facilitate accommodations, ensure that lack of knowledge is not a barrier for access. Thank you again for listening to the voices of students and survivors and for the opportunity to testify and support. I'm also available to answer questions on this bill as needed.
Thank you, Lily. We have about 20 others that, or 15 others that submitted testimony in support. Did anyone else wishing to testify? Okay, now we'll move on to the last item. House Bill 8, I'm sorry, let me bring up questions.
No.
House Bill 848, House Draft 2 relating to Hawaii Institute for Marine Biology appropriates funds for three support staff positions for Hawaii Institute for Marine Biology. And Megan Donahue for the University of Hawaii in support. Aloha, Megan.
Aloha, good afternoon. Chair Ken, Vice Chair Khedani, and members of the committee. My name is Megan Donahue. I'm acting director of the Hawaii Institute of Marine Biology. The University of Hawaii has submitted official testimony in support of HB 848. I stand on that testimony. I'm here to answer any questions for you.
Thank you very much. That's the only testimony we have that's on Zoom or in person. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Hearing none. Members, any questions? Hearing none. That brings us to the end of the agenda. I'd like to go straight into decision-making if that's okay with members. Okay, so going back to our two resolutions, SR 23 and SCR 27, requesting the University of Hawaii to support ending menstrual equity to providing menstrual products to all persons free of charge in all universities providing restrooms. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, members. I'd like to add a couple of whereas's and a couple of be it resolved. Add first whereas, whereas UH Hilo has also implemented a free menstrual products program without having to be elicited by law and is established project costs. Also add where, whereas the PI with a Phi Theta Honor Society at the Pioneering Community College implemented and implemented the providing of menstrual products in campus restrooms on their own volition without a mandate. So those are the two whereas's to add in. Also, the be it resolved, I want to add in a language that says be it resolved to urging University of Hawaii to provide free menstrual products to university students and faculty at all of its university, community, college, and education center campuses. And two, be it resolved that the University of Hawaii consults with students at each campus. And insert technical and non-substantive amendments with the purpose of clarity and consistency. So those are the recommendations, members. Hopefully, I didn't leave anything out. Members, any discussion? If not, Chair votes aye.
For Senate Resolution 23 and Senate current Resolution 27 to pass with amendments.
Oh, I'm sorry. Forgot one other be it resolved. The University of Hawaii system is requested submit a report to the legislature no later than 20 days prior to the convening of the regular session 2024 on the status of implementation of the distribution of free menstrual products at all of the University of Hawaii system campuses. Okay, with that, members, Chair votes aye.
Chair votes aye. I vote aye. Senator Fukunaga?
Aye.
Senator Key Agaraj?
Senator Favela, excuse me.
Measures a doctor.
Thank you. Members, on House Bill 554, House Draft 2, I want to recommend that we defer decision-making until Tuesday, January...
January.
It's a big march. Go ahead.
I'm on.
March 21st at 3:10 PM for decision-making. I'm going to recommend amendments, certainly some technical ones. But I think there is some questions that was raised about the definition of sexual misconduct and the immunity clause. So we want to look into that further and come up with some language. But the intent is to pass that measure. So if there are no objections to deferring decision-making to Tuesday. The next item is House Bill 5D, House Draft 1 relating to victim counselor privilege. Recommendation is to pass as is. Any discussion? Hearing none. Chair votes aye.
Chair votes aye. Senator Khedani votes aye. Senator Fukunaga?
Senator Key Agaraj?
Senator Favela, excuse me. Measures a doctor.
Thank you. And for the last item, House Bill 848, House Draft 2 relating to the Hawaii Institute for Marine Biology. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, insert technical, non-substantive amendments. It's already had a blank appropriation, the date is already defective. However, the current title misstates the name of the institute. It should be Hawaii Institute for Marine Biology. And so also specify that it will go to UH 100. And then add the section, "In the event manifests, in the event manifests clerical, typographical, or other mechanical errors are found in this act, the governor is hereby authorized to correct such errors." Any discussion? Hearing none. Chair votes aye.
Pass with amendments, House Bill 848/HD2. Chair votes aye, Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Fukunaga?
Senator Key Agaraj?
Senator Favela, excuse me.
Okay, with that, members, thank you very much. We'll be back in a minute.